Okay, it is seven o'clock. I will call to order the regular city council meeting for Monday, October 21st, 2024. And I ask that you please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as Batavia enters into heavily end of the fall season, we are ever thankful for the beauty of the trees and the sentiments of the season, knowing that the holidays are just ahead of us. And we are most thankful for all their great activities and events that Batavia will have in the coming days. Tonight, we want to say a special moment of appreciation and kindness and thanks to the Batavia Police Department for the outstanding professional way that they handled an active shooting situation last night on Randall Road and the 300 block on both sides of the street. It was truly a great illustration and exercise of the outstanding professionalism that we enjoy with the Batavia Police Department, and we are most thankful for that. Tonight, we ask for the understanding and vision and appreciation on the parts of the members of the city council as we act on tonight's agenda, knowing that in the hearts and minds of each and every one of our members, they are here to do what was always going to be in the best interest of Batavia. We also want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask that a special blessing be showered on each one of these men and women as they go about their missions in defense of the United States of America. We ask for all those blessings. Amen. Alderman Brazza, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's the city clerk to please call the roll.
Brazza?
Here.
Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Peeper?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vogelsinger, absent.
We have 13 of 14 members of the council, so we obviously have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Item four, reminder from the chair that if you're going to address us tonight, we ask that you come up and use the podium and speak into the mic because this is being filmed and will be broadcast on BATV. And without people using the microphone, it was difficult for those watching to understand or hear what's going on. Moving to item number five, items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Do we have anything? I guess not. All right, moving then to item number six is presentation and a consent agenda. Alderman Beck, do you have this, please?
The consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the committee of the whole minutes for September 24th, 2024; the plan commission minutes from August 7th and September 18th and October 2nd, 2024; historic preservation commission minutes from August 26th to 2024; the building reports for September of 2024 and the August financial reports. And for approval, the October 11th, 2024 payroll in the amount of $1,029,630.89; the accounts payable check register in the amount of $6,819,790.34; the city council minutes from October 7th, 2024; and for approval, the 2025 meeting calendar; resolution 2024-133-r accepting a public utility easement at 1150 McKee Street; resolution 2024-132-r accepting a public utility easement at 1320 Hart Road; resolution 2024-130-r authorizing software license and services agreement; resolution 2024-131-r confirming appointment of director and alternate to the Board of the Northern Illinois Municipal Power Agency; resolution 2024-127-r authorizing the fire chief to execute a contract with Fire Service, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $2,060,390 for the tower aerial ladder; resolution 2024-129-r authorizing approval of a plot of easement for 550 North Randall Road; ordinance 2024-64, the 2025 wages and salaries for non-collective bargaining employees; approval of the COW executive session minutes for July 23rd, 2024 on contracts relating to the purchase, sale, or delivery of electricity; and July 30th, 2024 decision on the third ward alderman appointment. Your Honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Alderman Beck, second, Alderman Sulfah, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Beck?
Hi.
Peeper?
Hi.
Malone?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Sulfah?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
Lehman?
Hi.
Ayazi?
Hi.
Malay?
Hi.
Uwer?
Hi.
Serone?
Hi.
Brazza?
Hi.
Lancy?
Hi.
13 yes, no, no, one absent.
Questions approved for the consent agenda. Moving then to item number seven, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening? Not many to choose from, it doesn't look like it, so thank you. Moving then to item number eight, presentation on an update on the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project. Scott Trotter, I guess?
Yes, sir.
Of Trotter and Associates.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Just a brief update on the progress we've made over the last month and what to look forward to in the coming months. This is just an overview showing the most active part of the site right now. In this corner up here, you'll see the new headworks facility, which removes, does the screening to remove inorganics, as well as grit removal. This is one of the primary clarifiers being installed, and this is a raw sewage pump station, as well as a sludge pumping station being installed. Worked on this week included the concrete channels and the upper slab being poured late last week. The UV equipment was delivered, and most of it is installed. They're doing electrical work now. And primary clarifier 404 is the circular tank that you saw being constructed. The primary clarifier and sludge handling building, or sludge pumping station, was the other structure I had pointed out. We've done the slab on grade, as well as the walls, and now we're forming the upper slab. With respect to off-site, Water Street is mostly complete. There is some overlay work that will need to be done there once the bike path is restored. We're looking for, in the upcoming weeks, to actually pave that bike path, as well as some patches along Union. So, most of the off-site work will be completed at that time. The remaining off-site work is limited to the area of the headworks. So, in addition to that, we're completing some hand railing and other work that was within the contract. Couple of project photos, just to give you an update on the off-site utility. So, this is looking at the bike path from our drone going north towards water. And what you're seeing there is the retaining wall on one side where the storm sewers were coming out of the buildings, and that's what has delayed this path to some extent. But the fencing is up, and the walls are up. The gravel base has been put in place. This is at the south end of that path where it crosses Penmarco. Other views of the bike path. At this time, you can see, it's a better picture of the retaining wall. Just some handrail work being done for code enforcement or for safety issues needed to be raised. This is work that's being done at the screening and grit removal building, commonly called the headworks. That's another picture from the drone footage of the headworks itself. You'll see that there is a grade change between the upper area where Penmarco is and the plant itself, and that will be these retaining wells down here. A third picture. Just a different angle showing the retaining wall of, some of you will be aware that there was a retaining wall here and a set of stairs that's being replaced as part of this project because it was failing. Moving on to the primary clarifier control building, there's three wet wells here, one for scum, one for raw sewage that comes in Long Island, and the third one for the plant drain. These are pictures of the clarifiers as they're being erected. Obviously, there are circular tanks, the solids are settled within these structures. Another picture of the progress, and drone footage of the progress. This building is nearing completion. This is the UV equipment. As you know, the UV 4000 system is no longer supported, and so the city has been relying on that equipment. It's imperative that this come online early in the project. We're being told that this system will be online by the end of the year, so it's on What the UV light does for you is the final step in the process and disinfects the wastewater before discharge to the river. And these are the bulbs that provide that disinfection. With respect to updated costs, we have, there has been $25 million spent, a little over 50% of the overall project. Estimated progress by schedule is roughly 40%, but the contractor, we will finish the project on time, so we're very proud of where we are to date. Change orders to date, there are no change orders essentially. We're at a negative $11,000 and no time extensions. With an updated schedule, the bike path will be completed in the next couple of weeks. The UV building will be completed by the first of the year. The headworks, which is the screening and grit, will be completed by March, and the new primary clarifiers are intended to be online by April. Overall, the contractor, it will be completed on time, barring anything going that we don't see. But, to be honest with you, we're extremely proud of the way the city and IHC and our team has performed on site. Everyone has a fantastic working relationship, and the progress of the work is as it should be. I'll take any questions.
Scott, what is your best estimate of how much federal money is being invested in this?
How much what?
Federal money.
Roughly 50% of the total dollars are provided by the feds. 50% is provided by loans that are repaid through past loans, so it's 50% state, 50% federal.
As I can remember when we were first trying to get this money, and we didn't really have a difficult time getting it because it was pointed out by you and several others that this is one of the largest plants immediately north of the city of Aurora, which is withdrawing the river water for its drinking water. And so, they wanted this to be a model of wastewater treatment and discharge into the Fox River. And I give a lot of credit to this gentleman who has put this together and got that engineering and the job done, and I think we're on track to get that totally accomplished. So, I just want to publicly say that, that, you know, this is a very expensive project for the citizens of Batavia, and to have that amount of money coming at us from the federal and the fact that we're building one of the model plants for water treatment in the state of Illinois under your direction is something that we all should be very proud of.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Laura, I may have messed up your agenda, but...
(laughter)
Any other questions? Thank you. Have a great evening.
As he walks back to his chair, I just want to add that I've gotten calls from other cities that want, when this thing gets done, want to come over and see this. I think Naperville is waiting in line. I mean, they very much are interested in what Scott's done here and how this is all coming together, because this is going to be kind of a regional model for other cities to build, so we should, you know, how many people are proud of their sewer plant? Well, Batavia has every right to be proud of its sewer plant because it's one of the best that's ever been put on the ground in Northern Illinois. So, thank you, Scott. All right, and next one is the Main Street report.
Hi. I'm trying to move this real quick.
You want me to see more?
Yeah. All right, thanks so much for having me tonight. Main Street's been busy as always with planning. We have Bat Fest coming up this weekend, so it'll be a busy day. It kicks off at 10:00 a.m. with a parade that starts right here off of, at the corner of Island and Houston, and then there'll be activities at Peg Bond. We have added an additional reptile show that has continued to be something really popular, and it helps draw people across to the other side of Route 31, so that's at the Congregational Church. We'll have two full sessions of the reptile shows, which is always, we always have at least 50 people go to that, so it's a nice way to pull people to the other side of 31. Throughout the entire event, from 10 to 2, there'll be live bats and other critters at Sturdy Shelter Brewing. At, during 10 to noon during trick-or-treating, Hearth and Hammer will have a balloon person and magician. New Moon Vegan will have a face painter, and they're decorating their entire shop as Super Mario World. And then Hearth, the Merc will have Joe and Doe Coffee and Donuts. So, there'll just be a lot of reasons to come downtown and bring your family. And then, we're also trying to promote after-hours, Bat Fest after-hours, so any of the downtown businesses can submit anything that they're doing in the evening. So, I know for sure Grainology will be having a little party. And then, on Sunday, Sturdy Shelter is having their homemade horror show. So, just a lot going on this weekend to visit. Another thing that's coming up is our holiday sneak peek. Last year was the first year that we did that, and the merchants really liked it. It's just a day when the merchants re-put out all their holiday wares and everybody stays open late. We've purchased a paid spot on the WGN daytime show to kind of increase our regional marketing, and something that we've heard year after year from the merchants is they would love to have a trolley help move people back and forth. So, this year, we were able to get a trolley, and it will look like that trolley in the lower left-hand corner. So, it'll be, we'll have five stops throughout downtown where people can just hop on and hop off and move around the city easily. And then, during that time, our photographer, April Dudo, will be going around and taking pictures of items that the merchants want to feature for the holiday season, and we will make a holiday gift guide that will be released no later than the 18th. Then, right after that, we have Winterfest Art Market, which is a partnership with Water Street Studios. That's where we have a bunch of different artisans in Water Street Studio in the dock, as well as live music at Kiss the Sky, and some food trucks in front of Hearth and Hammer, and a couple extra vendors in Hearth and Hammer. So, that is the November 8th, 9th, and 10th at Water Street Studios. Then, the indoor market moves to Grainology on November 2nd. That is 9 to 12, and that will continue for the entire season. We're already full for the season. We filled all 24 spots super easily. It's just going to be a really nice lineup of vendors this year, so be sure to stop by and check that out. And then, we have the following week, the 12th, 13th, and 14th, the Illinois Main Street Conference. Registration is open. I believe I've sent everybody around a code for them to register, so please do so if you're planning to attend. It should be a good time networking with different Main Street communities, and a lot of other communities who are maybe interested in joining Main Street or just interested in the work that we do and not necessarily becoming a Main Street, attend this conference. So, basically, we just have a lot of fun opportunities to come downtown. We hope to see you. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Questions for Beth?
Did you announce, sorry. Thank you for all the information. Did you announce the date of the Main Street Conference? It is November 12th, 13th, and 14th. The 12th is the opening reception at Sturdy Shelter. Sessions start at the library. The mayor is going to do the opening address at 9:00 o'clock. On the 13th, there will be an awards dinner that usually the lieutenant governor comes and presents the awards. That'll be at Revelry. And then, closing, there's a couple sessions on Thursday, as well as a project by, it's an organization called Better Block. They help to do temporary structures to kind of prove or test ideas. So, we'll be doing a building project and placing some art pieces around downtown. Thank you.
And all the information is on the website, right? If you want to find different dates or different things?
Yes.
It's on the Main Street's website.
The whole schedule is on the Illinois Main Street Conference. You can just scroll down from, if you go to Conference 2024, the whole schedule with the description of the different sessions is available there.
Question? Other questions? Do you have anything else you want to offer, further offer?
I think I'm good. Is that good?
Want to give us a preview of Christmas?
(laughter) Well, I gotta save something for November, right? All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, item 10 is going to be a public hearing on establishing a special service area number 71 for the Ashton Ridge subdivision.
We have to put that off because the meeting time is scheduled 7:35.
Yeah.
I'll have to push that off until after 7:35 because that's when it's timed. We're moving too fast.
Poltsies gotta learn that if they're gonna start building in Batavia, we don't slow down.
Would you like me to slowly cover the administrators' report? Thank you very much. We are rolling into our leaf collection season, and we have two regular collections, and then, weather permitting, we actually have a third collection. So, that started this week on the west side. We're picking up leaves, and then, on October 28th, will be the first collection on the east side. The second collection on the west side is November 4th, and the east side is November 11th. And then, again, that extra third pickup, weather permitting, will be November 18th on the west side and November 25th on the east side. When you move your leaves out to the curb, please try to keep them six feet back from the curb if you can, to try to prevent as many of them from blowing into the street as possible. And then, we also ask, you know, as you're doing that project, if you could just notice where the sewer grates are along the curb adjacent to your property, because we want to make sure to keep the leaves out of those grates to prevent any flooding. We need our stormwater to, if we ever get any stormwater again. It's been a pretty dry few months. And I think that's it on that. Also, we had an opportunity to meet with the Food Pantry and Clothes Closet and their architect, and they're getting close to done on the plans that they have for renovations at 916 First Street. And so, we expect that we'll be going out for bids in January of 2025, and that construction will be completed in spring of 2025, and they should be able to move in thereafter. We've decided that we're going to have the 2024 toy drive distribution at 916 First Street because it is currently being used to store this year's items for distribution, so we'll likely be having that there. The new Sutven fire engine will be delivered to the dealer this week for equipment mounting and delivery preparation, and we expect the engine to be delivered to the fire department in early November. And when it is, we'll plan a public push-in event for that new apparatus. That's always a fun day. After utilizing the electric divisions, two new plug-in hybrid SUVs for approximately six months, the electric staff has reported an almost 100% elimination of engine idling time and a 90% plus reduction in gas consumption. So, staff has really found these vehicles could be used in EV mode for almost all of their in-town driving. However, the manufacturer does recommend that we take it out onto the highway and use gas so that it maintains the lubrication, all the parts, to cycle fresh fuel through the system to keep it working properly. Other than that, we are hard at work on our budgets, and the first public, the first committee of the whole meeting to discuss the budget will be on November 4th. So, definitely encourage the public to participate in any of those discussions. We plan to have the draft budget out the week before that. Does anybody have any questions for me? Scott Buning?
Yes, also, as a reminder, this Thursday, we will be having the South River Street Open House.
Yes.
For the study of the South River Street area, so everybody's welcome to attend. We've sent out notices to the property owners in the area, also adjacent areas as well. So, certainly, if you have any interest or want to see what's going on in that area, please come to the open house on this Thursday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
And this week and next week, we have early voting going on here at the Government Center. And so, Mayor, how many did we have come and vote today?
I think it was 262.
Yeah, it was a busy place today, so we're encouraged to see a lot of voters come out. It's from 9:00 to 3:00, is that correct, Mayor?
I believe it is. It's 9:00 in the morning till 3:00 in the afternoon, and it's only during the weekdays. I don't think they're here on the weekends.
No, they are not. Just the weekdays.
And it's this week and next week?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
And it's a very cordial and friendly group. They seem to understand, and there's one that sits over there at the end when there's that white machine there right by the post. And when you get through voting, they put it in the computer and it runs what you do. Then, they give you a sheet back, and they bring the sheet over there, and that's a cutter. And they, you, the voter, put it into the ramp, and it destroys your vote, right then and there. So, nobody can say, well, they're voting twice, or they took the vote and did something. They destroy them right there, and it's all recorded on the computer. So, I'm, I was joking with them today, there's going to be, I think, on election night in Kane County, there's going to be a real quick count of a whole bunch of votes on all the races because, because they're all there. And it's in, I was here for most of the day because the Chief Mazza and I had had some conversations about what is really going to happen in this whole thing, because there's some people that aren't happy about something in the election. And so, I just kind of kept an eye on it, and so, I had the opportunity to kind of talk with a lot of people. And there was quite a conversation going on about, you know, where all, where all the voters are coming from. And as I understand this process, anybody can come from any place in Kane County, and as long as you're in the county records, they, they count you right here, and then you can't vote again, but you can come from Aurora or Elgin or wherever you want to and cast your vote. So, that's a, that's a very interesting situation to have going. It was interesting, as I stood around here, to hear some people talk about stuff that they liked and didn't like. And they were very complimentary toward this room and how this was all laid out. But the one thing that was, they were kind of mad about, I gathered, was it used to be in a, in a general election, you could vote for one person, but now they want you to vote for every, you gotta make a vote in every race, I think, is what they indicated to me. Because there was a lot of them that said, well, we came in here because we only wanted to vote for one thing, and that was the President of the United States race. And they didn't know nothing about all these other names on the ballot, and who they were, and what they were all about, and whatever, but they wanted to vote for the President of the United States. Now, they didn't get me into it, fortunately, with me, about whether they were voting for one or the other, but they were, they were here to vote because they wanted to vote for the President of the United States. And so, I was, it was kind of unclear to me. If they only voted for that one race, I assume the vote got counted. I don't know. I gotta find that out tomorrow, and I'll report at the next meeting what they, they say, but that's a, that's a frequent question because they're wandering around out, out in the parking lot and whatever, and there's a lot of older folks coming, and they need to get in the handicapped parking lot and whatever, and then they need help getting in. And of course, a lot of them want to come in that door, and they want them to come in that door. And so, I guess I used my powers as mayor two or three times when we had some pretty badly handicapped senior citizens, and they were either in wheelchairs or whatever have you, and instead of trying to wander them through all that parking lot, I said, let me just bring in the door here, and we'll... I said, let me just bring in the door here, and we'll bring you in. And the judges kind of gave me the high eye about what I was doing, but that was just the way it needed to be done, I think. And we haven't done anything wrong, but they're there to keep an eye on it. So I'm pleased that we have this facility here, and that we can do this, because there's, I'm told some other cities that can't do this with their facilities, and we've got this. And everybody was very complimentary, and I had talked to Jack Cunningham, the county clerk, a few weeks back, and he was extremely complimentary toward how Batavia had made this a model voting center for this large number of people they anticipate will be voting. So we'll see how many show up tomorrow.
Yes.
It just struck me. Would you mind touching base, just because I saw some things online about, and I think you sent a response email as well, but just to get it publicly, about the road diet, and the merging, and all that?
Right. So some people, because they are very familiar with the way that the road merges north of us in Geneva, and that that road collapses the inner lane into the outer lane, so they're basically merging to the right, we received questions, how come in the city of Batavia are we dropping the outer lane to come to the center, when we've got the center turn lane? And I talked to our engineers about this, and they explained that how much the road actually bends to the right as you're heading north from Wilson Street. And so, between that, and the amount of room that they had at the edge of the road, it made it better for the outer lane to collapse to the inner lane, so to merge to the left. And that is based on the characteristics of the road at that point. That's what IDOT's regulations would dictate. It should be designed in that way. And since we know it took so long for us to get our permits in the first place, we tried not to ask IDOT for, you know, too many exceptions. And so, we just went with the standard of what they would recommend for that. And that was to collapse left toward the center.
And if I'm correct, we still have to do some striping, and arrows, and signage for that, so that will become more apparent once it's finished.
Yes. I believe that all of the striping that's on the road is done, but we still have signs to install, and Gary has.
Yeah, Sunday, actually, they completed all the striping. But you are correct. The signage and the pavement markers are still to be finished.
Yes.
What were they out doing today? Because there was trucks right downtown here.
Pavement markers, reflective markers.
Okay.
At nighttime, when you see.
Those are going in?
I also noticed that they did crosswalks at each of the side streets. They were also doing those.
Go ahead.
No, I just want to point out, I happened to read that concerned letter about the arrows, and then I turned north from Houston, and the arrow brought me right there. It was perfect. Like, if it went against it, it would be awkward.
Exactly.
Different scenarios require different things.
Yeah, I've had several citizens tell me, when I'm out and about, that they were very skeptical about this whole idea when it was done. But now, it has been put into place, and they've driven it. They think it's a very nice way to go, and Batavia's made it easier for them to do. And where I got some pretty strong praise, is I was up to the homestead yesterday, and several of the folks came right up to me and said, Mayor, that way you've now changed it so we can make an easy turn in here off of Batavia Avenue, and that waiting lane there, that used to be dangerous, and you were sitting there, and the cars were coming up behind you, and whatever have you. And there were several accidents, and some of us kind of drive kind of slow, and we get rear-ended by it. But now, you've got this designated lane for us to sit in. This is, thank you very much, thank the city council, because this really is something that's working very positively for us. So it's been a positive result, we've heard from about it.
I was gonna say, Mark has his hand up. Oh, Mark?
Hello. Yeah, very quickly, as a resident, I'm 31. And I don't know if you've noticed this too, Laura, I can look out. I've only been home for a few days, but it's happened. But I can totally see how much slower the traffic is moving.
Yes.
I've watched people fly past my house before, and now, it's just so orderly, and it's just so nice. And now, I actually feel safer cutting my lawn, when I have to actually step out in the 31.
Right.
It's not as dicey, so.
I totally agree. I had to cross the road to get to the farmer's market this weekend. It was so much easier just having one lane of bidirectional traffic to worry about. Yes.
The other side of that, too. My husband drives that way every day, and he was nervous that it was going to back up traffic, add fewer lanes. And he said it just flows very nicely.
While traffic is moving slower, it's flowing nicely. So, yeah. All right. Well, thank you very much.
We've passed the magic line of 7:35.
Yeah.
So, do I need to proclaim a public hearing for you to get up to the mic?
You can do it anytime you want. But now's 7:35. It's good.
Okay, we're gonna have a public hearing on establishing a special service area number 71 for the Ashton Ridge subdivision, and we'll turn it over to our community development director.
Thank you. Apologize for the delay. Normally, we would have this at 7:05, but we had an error in our public notice, so, you know, we dragged it out pretty good. So I think it worked out okay for everybody. So this is a backup SSA for the Ashton Ridge subdivision. That's the old Siemens property that's under construction. This is to cover in the event that if the association does not maintain the common areas, the detention areas, and those types of things, we would be able to activate this, and then have the taxes for the property owners that are in there pay for the actual maintenance of those improvements. So it's something we hope we never have to maintain and activate, but it is the backup thing that we have in all new subdivisions. So this is 75 cents per $100 of EAV. So it's a little higher than some of the other ones have been, because of the fact that we have more expenses that we've found for, especially when we're doing it with naturalized planting bases and such. So there is more expense that's involved in doing that. So, again, this is a backup. We would hope we would never have to activate this, but it would be in place just in case.
And this one, most of the people who have yet to buy their houses, they'll be informed of this as part of their closing on their property. So it's not like you're surprising them or doing something. And I think, hopefully, the sales folks for Pulte will be quickly able to explain to them exactly what this is and why it's being done.
Yeah, we found that when we're trying to implement these after the fact, where we have had a couple of them, we've had to do that. It's much more challenging to do, because people, you know, don't want additional taxes and impositions on them. So we try to do these right up front to get them done.
Kind of planning for the future. It may never happen, but we have the plan in force and effect.
It also makes the residents much more apt to pay attention to what's going on in their neighborhood, to make sure that that gets taken care of, so they don't end up in this situation of having the tax added.
We like to say that, you know, we're a little more expensive. We move very slowly. So.
And I would note that, from what I hear, Pulte is not having much trouble selling their houses. I mean, they're selling pretty rapidly, and everybody seems to want to find a place in Batavia. And those are not necessarily cheap houses that are being built there. So it's got a lot of positive impacts falling at us right now.
Well, over 100 permits in Windy Creek. I think 162 total in that development. So we're well over halfway. And then, you know, obviously, sales haven't started yet for this development yet, but, you know, they're working on all the infrastructure and everything this week.
And Ashton Ridge, is that what we call them? I call it the furnace electric property. That one, they're telling me they're hoping, and I don't know if they're, to get a model up before wintertime comes.
That's their hope.
But they've got to have a street in front of it that they can get to. And then, they want to build, what is it, four townhouses next to?
Their models, they're looking at the single family to be on Van Norwick, just south of McKee. So they do have a street there. It's just that we have to work out the utility connections. And then, the townhomes would be at the very south end of the development off of Wilson Street. So basically, more or less next to Green Meadows Apartments. Just, it'll be east of it, but in that general vicinity.
There'll be an exit onto Wilson Street.
There'd be a street if they get it done before the season ends here, yes. So the single family will be the easy one to get done, because the street's already there. The townhomes, they're kind of under the gun.
I saw that little blue map that they had prepared to show that one lot on Van Norrick, and then the other four, because the townhomes are, I think, four per unit, aren't they? They're all.
It's four or five per unit, depending on the building, I believe.
But they're all attached, but they're all separate. And so, they all meet our building codes, which are pretty stringent. So, and I've already had people tell me, they've talked to Pulte about putting a contract in to buy one of those, and they hadn't even built yet. So I talked to some folks earlier today that were telling me that they had family members in toward the city, and they're just waiting with great anticipation when they can get out here and see one before they put a contract down on it. But they want to get into Batavia. And I had another meeting earlier today, and I told the folks that we were in, that this may be one of the fastest-growing spurts in the history of Batavia that we're experiencing right now, between those two, and then out there on Kirk Road, the subdivision that got built, what we call it?
Prairie Commons.
Prairie Commons. Prairie Commons. That's 242 units. It's totally built. There's some, there's a couple, they're still finishing the insides.
They're all done now.
Oh, they're all done?
Yep.
Anyway, they had those, the ones that were still working on, they had sold. So that one's totally sold out already. So that's 242 new residents, or families coming into Batavia. So we've got some real growth coming in here at the moment.
Just to kind of say it out a little bit, I want to make sure my understanding's correct. This SSA would sort of remain in place in the event that the subdivision goes belly up. This is something we could then activate. So it would not, we wouldn't be collecting any money on this, unless something happened, and we needed to maintain sort of the drainage ditches, the other sort of stuff there. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this.
Yeah, so let me clarify two things. So when you say subdivision goes belly up, there's two different connotations for that. So the development is in its current construction stage. So if, you know, like it happened in the recession in the 2007, subdivisions went belly up, and developers went away, we have a letter of credit that covers the public improvements to finish off roads, infrastructure, everything else in there. So that covers if the subdivision and the developer goes away, which is unlikely with Pulte, but, you know, that's what we have. Once a subdivision is done, people have moved in the homes and everything else, and there's a homeowners association that's in place, they have dues that are levied to pay for maintenance of the common areas and all those types of things. If the association dissolves, or decides, you know what, we're just not going to maintain it because we just don't want to, it's at that point, we would then say, okay, if you don't do that, then we're going to activate the SSA and do the work, and then you guys will be paying for it through your property taxes, with an additional tax through the SSA.
Thank you. That helps for me. People don't listen to that.
We're very fortunate that we have a community development departments looking out for us in the long run here, so. Any other questions? So do we need to have a motion to adjourn the public hearing, or?
Close the hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
You can close it. Nobody's here to speak about it.
Do we need a motion for that? No? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and then we will move to item 11, which is ordinance 2024-063, establishing special service area 71 for the Ashton Ridge subdivision, SSA 71.
Make that motion. Will you approve that?
Involving Solfah for the approval of ordinance 2024-063 for the special service area 71 in Ashton Ridge. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
14. Yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. Well, we've already handled item number 12, which is the administrator's report that we have other business. And 14, the mayor's report, I've talked a lot tonight, so you've gotten my report in broken pieces throughout the meeting. But a lot to talk about, and it's all pretty good stuff. As I began the meeting in my prayer, we had a very interesting situation happen last night in the police department. And somebody fired a gun off out in Randall Road Corridor, and our guys responded, and they called for help. And it took them just a few minutes till they were able to find out kind of what happened, because one of the perpetrators, I don't know, ran or took a walk, and we ended up finding her in a restroom with some help from some folks. So it all came out real good. But I happened to be out in that area, and I was watching over things. And I was just, number one, very proud of the Batavia Police Department, but I was just very impressed by all the other neighbor squad cars that showed up, from Geneva, and St. Charles, and North Aurora, and Kane County had a bunch. And there was a whole bunch of guys there, in case something really was going to go down in a bad way, because they had put it out on an eye reach to all of them that Batavia needed some help. And it came here really quick. So it's good to know that we have that ability behind us, that we got all this great. And as most of you know, the fire department set down to Florida, we were part of a Kane County convoy of fire apparatus and support to go down to deal with the hurricane. And the guys got down there, and they were there.
44 hours?
72 hours. They were there, and they were told, well, we don't really need you anymore, guys. Thanks for coming, but goodbye. And so, they packed it up and came back home. And we were supposed to be there for two weeks. But I guess the hurricane did a lot of raining and wind blowing, but it didn't do anything that caused any building collapses or whatever, that they needed to search wreckage, or pump water, or anything else. So we went and we came back. But I'm proud to say we went and did our thing, and knowing that if, goodness knows, something like terrible happened in our area, that we'd get that same kind of response from other states and other areas. So it's good to know that we have that kind of working force, too. All right, it's 10 minutes to eight, and I entertain a motion for adjournment. Moved by Alderman Solfah, seconded by Alderman Wolf. Kirk, call the roll on that one?